Here.
Present.
Here.
Here.
She's on her way.
Present.
Thank you. Item C, approval of the agenda. Need a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor to approve, say aye.
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 If it was no, motion carries. Item two, presentation, student staff, community recognition, and shout-outs. We have several of those today. First one I'd like to call up is Leah Foley, nominated by Tim Radke. Is she here? Okay, well, we'll get her when she gets here then. How about Kate McKinney? There we go. Nominated by Chris Burghammer.
He's here.
Kate is an amazing employee at Spooner Elementary. She wears so many hats in her role as elementary guidance counselor. She makes time for countless students and staff members on a daily basis. She also works as our school assessment coordinator and our PBIS Tier Two coach, and is a member of our building leadership team. I do not have enough compliments or positive adjectives to describe Mrs. McKinney. We are extremely lucky to have her working in our building. Thanks for all you do and all the people you support. The next award will go to Kyle Linton. Nominated by Mr. Schroeder. Kyle and his Skill USA students completed a very successful holiday fundraiser. Anyone who purchased one is thankful for the amazing craftsmanship. This fundraiser raised approximately eighteen hundred dollars for the program. Thank you. We can do Leah when she gets here, I think, right? You hear now?
You can go to the shout-outs, maybe.
I will insert her in the agenda when she gets here. So, we'll move on with item two B.
You do got some shout-outs on...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. We have some more shout-outs, exactly. Shout-outs, that's an important part of every month's school board meetings. Like to shout out first, nominated by Mr. Schroeder, the varsity boys' basketball team and Coach Fiesel. Congratulations on defeating Hayward, taking the lead with two seconds left in the game. Second shout-out goes to Suzie Olson Rosenbusch by Mr. Schroeder. Suzie, the FAA chapter and SHS hosted an event for the FFA leaders of four of their schools where they completed applications for national and state awards and certifications. Third shout-out, reported by Mr. Burghammer, is for the elementary school students, Ms. Knutson, and all the elementary school staff involved in the holiday programs. Once again, the Spooner Elementary School students, staff, and Ms. Knutson turned in an A-plus performance at our holiday spectacular. Next one goes to Ryan Predney and his crew, nominated by Mr. Burghammer. They did an awesome job of keeping our lots and sidewalks clear of snow the day of the Spooner Elementary School program. Next shout-out goes to the seventh and eighth grade band choir students, Mr. Caduce and Mr. Scafidi. Our seventh and eighth grade band and choir students, under the direction of Mr. Scafidi and Mr. Caduce, put on an excellent holiday concert on December seventeenth. And the last shout-out goes to the middle school student council and Mrs. Bush, who is the advisor, reported by Mr. Fiesel. Our Spooner Middle School Student Council Community Service Project Committee organized a donation drive to benefit the Washburn County Humane Society prior to break. We've heard tremendous feedback about the amount of items that were donated. Great job. I'd like to call Leah Foley to the front. Leah was nominated by Mr. Radke. On a daily basis, Ms. Foley has demonstrated strong nursing and problem-solving skills. Being the only registered nurse for the school district, she balances public health, student injuries, illness, as well as students with complex medical needs that require monitoring while they're at school. Her nursing skills have truly saved lives, provided students with the ability to attend school when they have chronic medical issues, and ensure that the district is a healthy place to learn and work. Thank you, Leah. All right, now we'll move on with item two B, the security camera demonstration request for information. Mr. Miller.
All right, purpose for tonight is to kind of give you an update on our district's security camera platform, what we've got, and where we want to go with it. So, I provide you with the information in your packets, and I just plan to kind of walk through a lot of that, and then ask questions, and hopefully give you a direction we can move forward with. So, let's start out here with what we currently have is a HikeVision camera system, has been used in the district for the last nine years. Basically, that system is approaching end of life, and being a nine-year-old system, it has issues that range from usability in areas of quality of the video, how long we can record video, just usability on a big act, who can access it, where and how they can access it, those kinds of things. Combined with what had become security and privacy concerns, because HikeVision is actually a Chinese company, and at a federal level in particular, concerns have been raised over the fact that there's a company that is Chinese ownership with either influence or owned by the Chinese government, that creates some real issues in terms of privacy and security, which is a big deal for us in school with students and staff, and is one of the reasons why we limit how and where you can access our system. It's not available in the cloud or things like that for that very reason. These factors combined together make it a compelling time for us to look at, looking at a new camera system for the district here. And so, with that in mind, we've been doing some planning for this project. And first, I'll just start out with scope and size of this project. Know from the beginning here, this is going to require keeping the board approved and receiving approvals, so we can ultimately move forward with some sort of implementation of a new system. To that end, we have done some pre-planning within the district technology office, which consisted of coming up with the criteria that we wanted to use for looking at different products that are out there, reviewing what those products are to kind of pick one to focus on that we can go out to bid to, you know, get costs and ultimately look at purchasing, and developing what this project is actually going to cost the district, and making that an accurate cost that we can, you know, live within and hopefully come under budget for. So, what that translates into some items for the board to consider as I'm moving through this and through this project is, obviously, I'm here tonight providing you information. I'm hoping that we will be able to look at board approval at some point to solicit bids from vendors to provide products and services, and move this along. At some time in early spring, we could go back to having the okay to go ahead and actually start purchasing and implementing a system. That being said, in terms of planning, my tech office staff and me, mainly Mr. Fulton, myself, initially started looking at different products that are out there. We looked at four or five different camera systems, ranging from Axis, Verkata, two others that I don't have right in front of me here, but we looked at four systems, narrowed it down to two, and from two, narrowed it to one. But in looking at every one of those systems, it became very clear that there are two components to this project. First is the equipment for the system, the hardware, cameras, that sort of thing. The other is additional wiring that would be necessary to put in all network system to be able to provide the kind of coverage that you're going to want in our buildings' environment from a safety, security standpoint. So, any project we move forward with will have two components for it. One is buying the equipment and hardware for the system, and then adding some additional wiring in all three of our buildings, so we can connect ultimately the cameras back to the system. What that led us to is, in terms of a product to look at, like I mentioned, we looked at in particular the Verkata and Axis communication systems, and it would be our recommendation that we look at Axis as a company and a communications platform, or video surveillance platform to go with. This is a Swedish-based company with a local presence in Wisconsin, so the company is based out of Sweden. It has vendors that it resells and works with that are in the state that we would ultimately work with. It also has product support people that are actually with Axis that are in the state of Wisconsin that we also would work with in terms of everything from support to just staying up to date on training, things like that. Overall, their product aligned very well with the criteria we established in talking with other districts that are using Axis products. They had very favorable recommendations, experiences using the product. We are also using the tools and working within the company's resources, came up with a very solid number of what we think this system will cost, which I'll touch on here in a minute. The big thing that we also liked about the Axis system is it will actually allow us to reduce the number of cameras that we have in the district that I'll show us here in a minute, while increasing vastly the coverage that we provide in the district. And the life of the system, like I said, we're on a system that's about nine years old, and looking at these newer systems, we're looking at this to have a bare minimum of five years. Everything purchased is warranted full five years, but the reality is, companies and schools and people we're talking to, we can expect realistically to maybe push the system as far as ten years. So, well, within the reasonable time life for a system like this. Lastly, compatibility and scalability. This is a system that has open-ended architecture, allowing it to integrate potentially with like our door access system. You want to be able to look when somebody fobbed in on a door, who was actually standing there, you know, doing the fobbing in, tying it in with things like alarm systems. If we decide we want to use different software to manage it, we are not locked into using one particular brand or vendor's software. So, all that, along with providing information and a review of this platform, in particular with our admin team and others in the district, we feel is a solid platform to look at going forward with. Touching on this real quick here, I've thrown up a few graphics here, all combined on one slide, but on the left, you'll see an aerial shot of the high school. And on that drawing there, all those anched covers in blue, yellow, and purple, that's the coverage we would have of our school grounds. Essentially, the entire exterior of the Spooner High School campus, and this will be the same outlay for the elementary, middle school, and alt school buildings. There will always be a few little blind spots, but we are decreasing immensely the number of blind spots or areas we just don't have coverage with what we currently have in our system. For example, right now, we do not have coverage on the football fields or the practice fields on the south end of the building. We have limited coverage on the east and west sides of the building and so on. Now, up the right corner, you will see what is hard to make out, but that is actual floor plan of the high school building, and that purple, blue, and green squares there, basically that outlines is that we will be providing coverage in the high school building, and the same for every other building, every hallway, corridor, high-use traffic areas like commons areas, gymnasiums, auditorium, certain classroom areas and such as that. So, we are vastly increasing the coverage we would have. And then down in the right corner here, just two quick shots, the highlights. From a usability standpoint, you not only have the ability to sit at your traditional desktop computer location with a screen of cameras up and look at it. Our people that use this, particularly our administrative team and that, will be able to have access from, you know, remote devices like phones, be able to bring up cameras while they're out in the buildings on the fly, not tied down to any one spot. This is also huge when we talk about the ability to work with law enforcement and other agencies like them moving forward to provide secured access in a way that they can effectively use us if it's ever needed at a time of crisis or security-related issues. Now, on the far right, just giving you a quality, is like when we look at some of those exterior areas and areas of the building, quality of the video is, we'll be able to read license plate numbers as people drive in and out of our buildings, so as we get vehicles, that kind of thing. We'll be able to have facial recognition of, you know, who you're looking at and be able to determine who that is. That, along with features that are available in a lot of these systems, we'll be able to have the ability to say, when something happened, I need to know what happened Tuesday morning up at the high school in the corridor on the northeast side of the building. Go back and get a spot of points where there are active cameras, where there's actually motion in the hallway, narrow it down and say, here's a face. Now, you can take that, and you can track movements of people on other cameras throughout the building to be able to, you know, figure out who was where, when, establish timelines, just a whole range that I could spend all night talking on of things that will provide much more usability, ease of use, and flexibility for our staff when they're dealing with using video as far as their daily operations in the school. And it also provides just a much safer and hopefully more secure environment. So, now, they've laid all the great things that something like this will do. There is a cost associated with that. And this is a cost that we knew going, this would be somewhere in this neighborhood. Working with the Axis system, the tools I have, I have been able to build a detailed list of the items we need, the materials, and that is based on their list pricing. So, that number of one hundred seventy thousand, or seventy-seven thousand, that's a high-end number. We were going to take that out to bid, let vendors bid on it, and other districts I talked with, particularly Duran, who most recently did this, we expect to come in under that number. I can't say how significantly, but it will not exceed that. The wiring cost, I talked with vendors that have done wiring for us in the past, and we came up with a very accurate cost. So, what I'm telling you tonight is that number that I see at the top there, that is our maximum. We would not exceed that number moving forward in the project, and I would fully expect that unless there are some unknown, and there's one I'll speak to in a second here, but we would probably come in under budget with the number that I've laid out there as far as moving ahead. When I do talk about one unknown, when it comes particularly in the network wiring, you've probably heard talk, if you've been following anything in the media, that there's potentials that tariffs may or may not come into play, various countries and things like that, that potentially could impact cost of materials down the road. And nobody is saying whether it will or not. We'll have to wait and see what happens, but we have the ability to lock in and beat some of that if we continue on a timeline to try and, you know, do this as a 2024-25 project. When it comes to purchasing, we've laid out a couple of options here. I've talked at length with Dr. Aslan and Trish Vasquez. If we looked at the forklift option, which is buy it all upfront, all at once, we would be able to do that within funds budgeted this year from the technology office and other areas. And Dr. Aslan, I'll let you, if you want to weigh in here, or more about those actual funding sources. That would be my desired route to go, is to get materials acquired, that we then start with a rollout and deployment here in late spring with the intent of having it significantly implemented or finished by the start of school in the fall of 2025. A second option that is very doable also would be you could go a phased route, where you would purchase some off of this fiscal year and some next year, and make it a two-page project, where we start this spring, and then we continue into next year to finish. Where I'm going with all this is that we would like to move forward in terms of asking the board to take this forward to your regular meeting and authorizing the technology office, working with the district office, to basically go out to bid, looking for bids from vendors that would provide the equipment based on the list that we detailed, and that is that first number I talked about. But also, talking to other vendors in our area that would do wiring-type work to establish a wiring, or bid to provide the wiring for the project. And then if those numbers come in, what we projected, ideally bring this back to you in March with the, move it forward and actually go ahead, start acquiring materials and services to implement the project. I've talked a lot here, but if I have questions or anything you'd like to see, I'm happy to answer them now. Also, very happy if people want to see more about the functionality and features and that sort of thing to set you up with demos or stuff like that outside the meeting, if you, something you want to see in the future. So, that being said, are there questions?
Questions from the board?
The current wire to the cameras right now, those are a different wiring?
Some of them. Probably about a half, a little over half of them use coax wiring, which was a traditional means of doing this when we were putting a system into place. The others are IP-based cameras that are our network, and we're going for, well, the industry standard now is IP-based or network-based cameras. So, we're looking at to establish wired connections in our hallways, corridors, some of the areas in the gyms, places like that, exteriors of the building, that we're just updating the wire. And when you start talking about pulling wire, it's like the outside corner of this building, that's where that cost comes in, in terms of bringing a company in to, you know, run that in, terminate it on the exterior of a building, and that kind of thing.
Thank you.
How many companies do this besides Axis and this Chinese company?
Well, there are about eight to ten vendor, I mean, there are a whole range of companies, from the ones you'll find on the shelf down at Menards and places like that, to, you know, like I mentioned, the four that we re-looked at were Verkata, Axis. HikeVision was initially in there until we became aware of, you know, concerns of the security, Chinese angle. And there are others. Ubiquity is another one we had looked at. But in terms of a cost, the other thing I'd add that's very desirable from the Axis is that this is basically your upfront cost of buying it right now, and we're done with that, short of somebody, you know, like coming in and bashing all the cameras and having to physically pay to replace one, but they're under warranty. The software, we're entitled to, this company's been in business for over twenty years, so I'm not looking at them going away. We're not going to see additional costs or licensing costs year-to-year, which is what happens with some of the other systems where you have to buy repeated licensing like you would from a company like Microsoft or Cisco.
So, what are we gaining with this new system that we have now, that we, what are we gaining from what we have now?
Expanded.
You said?
More coverage and ease of use and access.
Cameras.
Yep, that's the cameras, but then it's the end user, and, you know, I'd be happy to let any of my colleagues here speak to the user ability of, you know, somebody that's working in the office areas on a daily basis to just dump it and pull up video on a camera. Right now, if one of my fellow principals says, we had something happen, it happened between eight and noon.
Yeah.
We're not sure when. Somebody has to sit there and kind of watch four hours of video, speeding it up, so it's not going to be, but looking for that person running through the hallway or something like that, whereas these newer systems get the ability to say, here's when you actually had movement in your hallway. Now, you can go in and look and say, is this what I saw it, and narrow it down. The ability to, to then, you know, something comes up where we need to share video with law enforcement, easily turn around, provide them access to what they need.
The Axis Communications Camera Surveillance System.
Yep.
Are those specific cameras they use, or I'm not...
Yep, that is their...
You say you go to vendors, but I mean, why, why are they vendors? Isn't this the vendor?
It's the same as like buying a Ford or Chevy car. GM makes the products, but you go to dealerships to buy your car, and then if you're going to go out, you're going to shop around, see who's going to give you the best deal. So, that's what I'm looking at doing.
And the cameras are all compatible with the system that you...
Yeah, it's their products, their cameras. But what's a, not necessarily essential feature, but desire is like, say, you use software to access it. These cameras that we buy from them could be used with other software packages down the road. Say, down the road, you say, you know, here's something that gives us something we want to use, it's not available with what we have. We don't, we're not tied into using Axis branded software with those cameras. Something like Verkata, it's like you use Verkata cameras with the Verkata software.
What have you heard from other schools, that pros, pros or cons for this system that have them? You talked to Duran, you said, who else?
Duran and O'Clare were the two that I talked to, were in our immediate area. Cost has been a factor, obviously, but the ability to, you know, replace multiple cameras with one camera that has multiple lenses, the ease of use, reliability, the ability to work with people, you know, both from a vendor aspect and the company itself within the state. It is, I'm not going to say it's an absolutely perfect system, but it is leaps and bounds forward with what we would have. And from a school safety perspective, this is just a direction that people are moving as far as better coverage and easier access to that footage.
Does this allow, oh, go ahead. Does this system allow, in case of a crisis, live or law enforcement?
Yep, that's, we would be able to give them an easy way to get in.
Through, via phone or some access?
Something like that, but also in a way that's very secure, but not so secure that it's limiting, which is what we have right now.
Is those cameras 4K, 8K?
They're 4K, 1080 HP, so high-definition cameras across the whole spectrum, which gets you into that image quality.
Who we have now?
We have a combination of everything from two megapixel cameras up to some 1080p cameras, and you can see where the quality of the video varies immensely. We also are looking at cameras that are in the system. For example, there would be cameras that point at the entrance. Those are the ones that will grab a license plate off a car. The other cameras that would be like a cross or on the side of the camera are not going to be able to read the license plate, but they're going to be good enough quality that you can tell the system, say, I want to know all the gray cars that drove through the parking lot.
Do we have any cameras now that would be compatible with this system that we could use and buy less cameras?
Not really, and again, there's that Chinese aspect of it that's kind of discouraging. And when we went with HikeVision back in the day, it was driven entirely by cost, which again was nine years ago. It, the system's been okay. It's done what we've asked it to, but needs have changed over that time, too.
Well, I think security issues are a big deal in our school. We want to make sure we're secure. So, I mean, it sounds like a reasonable thing, but...
Anybody, any other questions for him? Storage, that would be a minimum of thirty days, or?
It would be, we're planning on, you know, for every camera to be able to store video for thirty days. If we decide we needed more, at some point, there's ways to, you know, increase that. So, that gets back into the scalability of the system, too.
Thank you.
But currently, we are, now, we record video for about two weeks.
Thank you, Hugh.
Any other questions? Do I have consensus then to put this out for bids, to have?
We had the consensus to move it to the board.
Move that, but...
Yep.
Move it to your regular board meeting to go out and do it.
Yes. Consensus, everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, very good. Thanks, Hugh.
Yep.
Item C, update on current out-of-school program and community ed. Mr. Barnett.
Thank you so much for hearing me again. It feels like I'm here a lot, but that's, that's fun. First thing I want to do is take a moment just to thank the four people that are in here that helped me make this program the best for our kids in Spooner, starting with Dr. Aslan. We have a lot of conversations about where we want to see things go. And then Josh, and Chris, and Pete have been awesome in helping to formulate what the next step is. So, very excited to just sort of tell you a little bit about where we, the successes of the past year. The biggest is that we secured funding for the next five years for the SES Mighty Engines program. We've established a student advisory board. We've increased by about ten members, our community advisory board. We've increased our student participation in all of our programs, up by about fifteen percent in both sites. We increased participation in summer school. The biggest one is that we've got our own teachers to buy into what we're doing, and we've seen an increase in the number of teachers that have stepped forward to lead clubs, both at the middle school and the elementary school. We also now have teachers teaching that are teachers on the faculty at St. Francis de Sales, and are continuing to work to build our numbers there. We've added two more positions in our instructional coaches, which has made a huge difference in our ability to make sure that our programs are well-staffed and functioning well. We've also worked really hard to increase student voice and choice in all of our programs, and Amber and I presented at the WASTA Conference, which is the out-of-school time conference for Wisconsin, about the great things happening in Spooner. That's the last slide. I'm going to read them all. You can read this, you know, you can see if you look at last year's to this year's, we're up, and that's the exciting thing for where we are. We've also, at the elementary schools, I've told you before, changed our programming model so that there's two half-hour periods, and rather than just one hour of instruction, at four PM in the afternoon, an hour of instruction is deadly. So, we've changed that up a little bit, and the kids seem to really like it. And our Thursdays with the Mighty Engines is a big hit. We've made pizzas, cookies, cleaned the garden, all sorts of fun things, and we continue to tweak that model. At the middle school, our numbers are again up. We have more teachers leading clubs. We're really working to try to build our student interest. If, if we offer only grade experiences for kids that are for all four grade levels at the middle school, what's the incentive to stay with it when I'm an eighth grader? So, we've started to do more with cross things that are fourth and fifth grade, fifth and sixth grade, seventh and eighth grade, and then continue to offer those that reach everybody. But that way, there's something for kids to look forward to when they get to those upper grades, and it's hope that over time, that'll help us keep students in there. Because if you look at the data and the trends, very much is we have a lot of fifth and sixth graders, less... less seventh graders, fewer eighth graders. So we want to make sure that those numbers are consistent all the time. A very exciting thing that we're moving forward to, uh, looking forward to is, uh, building a high school OST program. We've hit some setbacks with this and that the state, uh, DPI is not offering a grant competition this year. And I don't want to wait two years to try to get this off the ground. So we're working really hard to secure funding, to make this a reality for the next school year. Uh, we need to come up with figuring out how we're gonna raise between 30 and 40,000 to make this happen, and I'm working on that. And if anybody has any ideas, I'm all ears. Um, but our goal would be that we're gonna work towards a coach tutor program, having some of our existing student interest clubs be part of it, figuring out how credit recovery fits in this, and also begin building the documents that are required to submit that grant in 25, 26 now. So building our SMART goals, building our mission, building our vision with a high school building leadership team so that that's ready to go and we don't have to wait a whole year to do that. Uh, we are continuing to, um, work on community education. It is the biggest challenge in my job, and it's not that I don't want to do it. There's only so much of me to go around. And doing some of these, um, other things for our students in the district have seemed to be a bigger priority than rebuilding that community ed piece. Um, this isn't the exact, uh, presentation. I'm hoping you have the exact one um, that has the three reasons for why it's a challenge right now. I think the biggest challenge is just the amount of time to connect with people. Um, I spend a lot of time in all three buildings connecting with teachers and trying to make our program that we've got right now really effective. Um, the bigger, the other challenge is, I think sometimes it's really easy when there are programs that I know I can sell to the community. This year, the shows that are being done in Minneapolis are not things that I think are gonna be big sellers in Spooner. And what I'm saying is, the big show at the Hennepin this year is Juliet, which is a takeoff on Romeo and Juliet from Juliet's eyes. That's not The Lion King. That's not Little Mermaid. That's not something that I think is gonna get the excitement that we've had in the past. We are looking at some other opportunities out there for those one and done days, but they haven't come to fruition yet. And the other problem is really trying to make sure that we're not duplicating what others are already doing. So I was all excited about a trip to Greece at Schenasse, and then only to find out that the seniors are doing that already. So if we duplicate that, we're only hurting them and we're only hurting ourselves. So it really is trying to find that niche. We are working on getting pickleball on the community ed website. Um, and if you haven't heard, um, the Shell Lake Art Center has just started a pickleball program. Um, so that may be a game changer in a lot of ways too, but, um, definitely, um, things to keep in, in mind as to why that program hasn't taken off. Summer school, we're very excited about an additional week of summer school to include gifted and talented experiences in ELA and mathematics. Um, that's gonna be an exciting program. And then the big question on the second one, what exactly, uh, the impact of Act 20 will be? We're ready for it whenever we have to be. We have an idea for how we would incorporate that into summer school. We're also looking to expand greatly our high school offerings, um, through both credit recovery, interest courses, sports, and also academics. Um, so more on that as we get closer to the summer, but a really exciting time for that summer school and, and trying to continue that momentum that we started last year where we increased our FTE pretty significantly. Um, and then more student choice, especially at the elementary and middle school levels. So that is my presentation, and I'm very excited about the things we've done and know there's a lot more work to do. And thank you to the people that helped me make that happen on a daily basis. Um, it wouldn't work, it is a community effort, so thank you.
Questions? Uh, yeah, you said, uh, art center. I saw that as well. Does that open up scheduling at our elementary level at all?
I don't know. Um, they haven't really decided. I, I may have helped them see that, that that was something they should look into. Um, but, uh, I haven't seen what they're doing yet, so I, I don't know the answer.
Okay. And my other question is, and I hate to bring this back up, but last time we met, asked those two groups, the, uh, backcourt and the pickleball group to get together, talk about those five days. It's my understanding that, um, when they left, that they were in agreement, but when I talked to Melissa Smith, who runs backcourt, they, they told backcourt that they didn't need all five days and said that they only needed less, so they only granted them the two days. Do you know if that's true or not?
I have no knowledge.
Okay. So as the director of community ed, if there is a scheduling issue, is Melissa Smith able to go to you as community ed director and you're able to say to the pickleball group, wait, this next week, we're gonna have to move pickleball back till 6:30 or to 7 o'clock?
I think the easiest way to answer that is we're in transition to figuring out what that, what that procedure's gonna look like. Um, I would think that somewhere in there, there's a yes, but I'm not sure exactly what that looks like today.
So I'd like to jump in if I may. So, so what I was told was that it was backcourt that said they only needed two of the five days that they talked about, so.
Well, I, I talked directly with Melissa Smith, who runs backcourt, or she does the scheduling, and she told me that. So it's something we can talk about afterwards.
Absolutely.
Has a community ever been surveyed, uh, on what they might like to see offered at the high school for community ed, like courses that aren't expensive, for example? You can not offer a one night course in cooking, for example, or welding or something. Is that ever talked about in community ed?
The answer to that is sort of, but not really. As, as we've done things, we've asked questions of the people that have participated, like what would you like to see? Um, but we haven't done a full out survey, and if that's something the board would like me to do, I'll figure out how to get that out there and.
Well, I'm not sure the community is aware that we have community ed, I'll tell you the truth. Um, and if we do, maybe we can offer some things to the community would, would bring adults in here rather than, you have a lot of stuff for kids, I know, but community ed is everybody, right? So, uh, maybe we can concentrate a little on that too.
Yep, over here. Thanks. Okay, um, yes, there's, have been surveys in the past prior to Mr. Barnett's coming onboard. I know that surveys have been sent out several times, and I would encourage you to do one now that you've kind of got your feet under you a good year or two under your belt, but I think that's very important. There have been surveys in the past, and I know it's been a responsive thing for the community, so I would encourage you and we can certainly help you with getting that out there, because it's important to have that out there of what people would like to see. So yes, there have been in the past, to answer your question. Um, we probably haven't had one in the last five years. COVID, some things went away, so I think now's the time to restart that for sure, so.
Anybody else?
Daniel?
Just to clarify, the addition of pickleball on the community education website, is that the same group that's doing it now, or is this separate?
No, this would be the group that's doing it now, so that it's listed as part of community ed.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Pat. We'll receive your information, place it on file. Item D, discuss the 2026 Europe trip proposal, Mrs. Sheek and Mrs. Nelson.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
This is Nelson. Uh, well, we're, we're proposing a trip and a tour again through, uh, EF tours. We partnered with them, and the first tour that we coordinated and offered in 2018, the tour date was for that trip. Process starting in 2016. Uh, it's family-owned business. They have a long history and they, they're accredited for, um, schools and universities. Traveling, these are pictures from that tour that we took in 2018 with our student body. We did have parents also attend with, with their students. But it gives them an opportunity to expand their knowledge of the world and their place in it and, um, how to integrate their experiences in education into their future careers. For academic credits, the high school credits that are offered through EF tours. Um, last tour, they were accepted by the high school. It's an accredited, um, there, there are little links down below here as well that you can look at, but it's an accredited program for the high school credits. And that would be for an elective, um, elective credit, a half credit. And then there are three college credits offered through EF at $360 total for three credits through Southern New Hampshire University. If you want more information about those, they are linked into the, um, into the presentation as well. Uh, one of the things we wanted to note, that pricing and payments, everything will be run through EF. No funds will be funneled, funds will be funneled through the district office or the school at all. On the bottom left of the screen up there, you can see that there's a tour, tour donation page that the participants will have. They can share a code with family and friends, and they can make donations directly into their student account. That costs zero money. The entirety of, of the gifted amount goes directly into the EF account. Uh, fundraisers. The platform that I just shared is what EF offers, and that will be the only fundraising that will be happening through the district. No fundraising will be done by senora, Mrs. Nelson, or I. And as I stated earlier, no funds will be funneled through the school district or the accounts, and there's no financial obligation to this tour tied to the district whatsoever. No, no financial obligation or responsibility. And then Maria?
So the tour that we are, the tour that we are proposing is, um, it will be in July 2026 for 11 days, and, uh, Mrs. Sheek and myself will be the leaders, and we will have chaperones, and we will select the chaperones depending upon their experience and depending upon, you know, the number of travelers that we will have total. The travelers who will be, um, able to go, it will be open to a school district students and the France, uh, St. Francis students from eighth grade to 12th grade of the 2024, 2025 school year. Uh, the tour will also be open to parents and guardian, guardians of enrolled eighth to 12th grade students of 2024, 2025, the school year. If we would not have enough travelers, then we will, you know, we will decide if we will, would like to open to sixth graders. But if we will open for sixth grade, um, the sixth grade student will have to go with a parent. And then we will open to also community members. The eligibility requirements, um, the tour will be July, you know, 2026, and the students that do not have four or more office disciplinary reports, and they will have to agree to the EF and the school district, um, policies and regulations.
And as far as the reports means majors, not minors, if that makes sense, the board?
Um, so the tour will be, uh, going to Italy. Um, the highlights will be Rome, Florence, Tyrode, and the Austria region, Munich, and Prague. So that will be, um, Italy. It will be Austria, it will be Germany, and it will be the Czech Republic. So that's what we would like to propose. Right there, you have, you know, some pictures of the places, and some of the highlights in each of the cities that we will be going to. Um, right here, if you would like more information, there is the itinerary, and there is a link that you can open and then see. Um, and here what is included, what EF includes is a full-time tour director, the site scene, which will be like, uh, four site scene tours led by experts, uh, licensed local guides, which will be do the, doing the extension to Prague. So it will be like five, uh, it will be five tours, and one will be, you know, like a walking tour, the entrance, food theme walking tour, this, uh, Sistine Chapel, St. Peter's Basilica, the Duom in, um, Florence, and, um, Brazil's ski jump that will be in Austria, and then Dachau in Germany. And then because we are, will be doing the extension to the Czech Republic, there will be, you know, like a tour there in the city. And, um, EF has, uh, personalized, um, guides that they really are extremely, you know, engaged, and they get students really engaged in the tours, and it's really, really nice. And what is covered, it will be round trip, uh, in major carriers, um, comfortable motor coach. It will be night, nights in hotels with bathrooms, and European breakfast and dinner daily, and, uh, lunch or dinner on the third day. So that will be the height, you know, what will be included. In transportation, we will work with the bus and company to transport the travelers to and back from the airport. Uh, if there are 12 travelers, we might take the school vehicles with volunteers to drop off and to pick us up from the airport when we return.
How, in the, for the, for the last tour, the district had a background check done on all adult travelers. EF also provides that. They provided it then as well, so that's something to consider if you would like to continue with that, um, background check done by the school additionally to what EF background check is for the adult travelers. Adult travelers for EF is anyone 20 years old and old, older. And they do theirs around three months prior to departure for their background checks for the adults.
There a cost for that?
EF, EF does this. That's part of what's included. Yep, there's no, there's absolutely no fees to the school whatsoever, and the travelers are paying directly to them. So anything associated is covered through EF.
There is a cost if we choose to have it done by the school.
Oh, I apologize. That part I would have to defer to Dr. Aslan. So that's something for the board to consider if that's something you would like to have in addition. So the expectations of the adults traveling with students is that there will be no alcohol consumption for anyone eight, under the age of 21, and for no one who is in charge of chaperoning. Adults traveling have to understand that it's meant for an educational purpose and that alcohol consumption should not take place in the presence of any students. So we did that on our last tour as well. And the adults that went, um, they, what's the word? They accepted that and they followed that guideline. For safety, safety is really important to me. Uh, there is a six to one chaperone ratio. Obviously, if it's not a number of six, six, 12, 18, so forth, then the number of chaperones to student ratios could vary somewhat, just based on the number of participants and travelers. Our, um, tour leaders discuss safety procedures with our travelers at the informational meetings. They're gonna be given a list. I make a list. I already made the list for US embassies and consulates, the addresses, the phone numbers, the game plan. If something goes sideways, where do we meet? How do we meet? Where do you go to hook to wifi so we can communicate? Last time we used WhatsApp, and it worked very well for us to communicate in Europe um, with one another. So if a student had an issue in the evening after it was curfew, they could um, message on that, and then we could go to their room and, and help address whatever their issues were. We will have our international calls activated on our phones, so we can make phone calls back to the United States and um, in the event that we need to, or if parents on this side need to get ahold of a traveler while traveling.
Um, right here, right here, the fine print, there is a lot of information about the trip there, so there are links there. And, uh, we will be distributing and collecting all the paperwork for all the travelers. Um, hard copies have been given to Mrs. Schroeder, Schroeder, I'm sorry, uh, in December, and these documents were reviewed by the district attorney and the school administration and approved by the school board when we did the tour in 2018 that was led by Ms. Sheek. And, uh, what we are requesting is- And what we are requesting is, you know, whether if we would like, if you guys would like to do the background check and mandatory for adults. And we would like to, you know, ask the board to approve the Italy and Germany EF tour with the extension to Prague for July 2026 with an option of receiving point five elective high school credit at Spooner High School as presented in this live show. And we talked about that. And with no money from fundraisers being funded through the Spooner School District. And, you know, and the background check that how you guys would like to go on that.
Questions?
In 2018, did we do background checks from the school?
Yes, for the first tour that we did, we, the school did want those.
Okay.
Would you, since you've did this before, could you just give me a brief description of the benefit from the last trip? What, I mean, the kids enjoying and what were some of the benefits that you think this is worth, worth doing?
Well, I can, I am gonna give a very high glowing remark to Senora because she, she had some of her upper level Spanish students going on that trip. We went to Paris, Provence, and then over to Fleguer and then, is that how you say it? I'm saying it wrong, I'm sure. I don't speak Spanish and to Barcelona. And so throughout that entire trip, when we got to the Spanish section, people in the shops, the, the students would be speaking the language and the people in the shops would, they'd stop the students and say, you speak very well, who, who, how did you learn or where did you learn? And they, oh, you know, here she is. They're like, they would compliment Mrs. Nelson about that. So the application of what they've learned and being able to communicate effectively the culture, the cuisine, the, the tour, just so you know, the tours every day. It was 7:30 AM, go time. And we got back anywhere between 9:30 and 10:30 every night. So there was education happening the entire time that we were out there. Do you want more or is that enough?
You're not selling me, I was just, I'm just.
A few of the students did, did do the college coursework, which part of it is on tour and then part of it is a reflexive, reflective aspect after.
How many kids do you need to go to make the trip? I mean, what's the minimum? Do you ever have problems with getting enough kids to go?
In our first meeting, I think we had, well, this whole entire room was standing only. Our tour, I think we took 26 and it was going to be 23 for the tour that COVID canceled. We'll call it that.
Is there a max you can take?
I think for a private tour, you can take up to 40. Yeah, but going back.
We could take more, it just would fill another bus.
It was really cool to see like on tour, you know, students, on tour, students were like, oh my gosh, this is so cool. Oh my gosh, this is so different. And, you know, it was just, just their faces just being awe with the, with the things that we saw. It was really, really cool.
And I did have one student, I'm sure if she's watching, she'll be like, oh my gosh, this is me. But she, she cried at the Louvre and for me, that's like the huge art museum in Paris and she just sat in awe.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Travel insurance, is that included in EF or do you guys do something separate or?
They have two travel insurance policies provided through EF and they're detailed in here as well. And so one of them, they have different price ranges. One of them is more flexible, a 24-hour advance cancellation for no, like you, whatever reason, you have no, no clauses on that. That one is the more expensive one and they just added that after COVID because they learned that people wanted that. And then there's a one that's not quite as expensive and that one covers, I believe it's up to 45 days prior to if they cancel for a reason. But for sure, it's in, it's, it's linked in so you can read those. The, the travelers are required to have at least the lower one. If they want to pay an additional amount for the coverage up to 24 hours prior, that's up to them, but we will be requiring that they have the minimum.
Yeah. Isn't this, it's linked here and explains everything with detail, all the information.
My links don't work. So let's say there's something that happens when you're there. Is there travel insurance in and within while you're on the trip that covers any incidences? Have to come back home early?
Yes. For example, there was like one student that lost his suitcase. His suitcase was like completely stolen, I think. And, you know, the EF kind of took care of it and then they gave him like money to buy, you know, what he needed and all that. So the tour director guides you to what you need in the event that, you know, like something that would happen. So that is really nice because they are the experts and they just kind of tell us and guide us of what we need to do. So depending upon, I do not recall what page specifically tells you about the insurance, but there's like peace of mind, for example, if something is happening in the, the, the country that we will be traveling, then EF will tell us, okay, this is not safe to go to that country and this is how we will, you know, like change it. So.
And they had also in it, if there was a, an accident or something happened and they were hospitalized, they paid for a guardian to come over and be with their, with their child, participant, yes.
But there is a lot of information here with a lot of details.
Fifty million dollars worth of insurance that they offer.
Thank you.
And it's, yep, it's detailed in the fine print, which we're scrolling through really fast. Can you read it? I feel like we're in an infomercial.
No, thank you.
But yeah, it's, it's in here, it gives you the details.
That's okay. Anybody else?
No, I just think it's a great opportunity. I appreciate you two putting this presentation together and willing to participate. And I think it's a great opportunity for a lot of students in this area that would never have this opportunity before. And so I think it's a great experience and thank you both for doing that.
Thank you.
Do we have a consensus then to move this to the board meeting?
We do and I would recommend that we do what we did last time and have background checks from here.
As, yes, yes. We have our own background checks, yes.
Yes, to have our own.
Yes.
I recommend that, so.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 2E, superintendent's search update. I'll ask Michelle to give us a little spiel and anybody else on that committee? Terry and Andrew, if you have something to add?
We had 12 candidates and the board looked through all of them and came up with the top six. Bruce sent all the, before the interviews, we were doing questions to those six. So we sent those questions out to them. We are supposed to have all those answers back from those by Friday so we can review them, which will now take time to do that next. Out of the six, one did decline. He had to, based on something that happened and his family medical issues. So we're down to five out of the six that we will be reviewing. And we are still on for interviews at the end of the month.
Thanks. You guys, have you got anything to add?
Nope.
Okay, seems to be going pretty well.
Yeah, there's some good candidates and looking forward to.
Looking forward to the interview process.
Thank you, guys.
Item 2F, discuss open enrollment seats for 2025-2026. Mr. Radke.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just here to give a quick presentation on the open enrollment seating for the next school year. I am going to apologize, I've had to kind of learn the process. There are some errors I will correct as I give the presentation and then we'll update that presentation for you as well. It's quite a learning curve. So just to review the open enrollment requirements by the state, we're required to approve open enrollment availability by the January board meeting or at the January board meeting each year. We provide open enrollment numbers for general education and special education for all grade levels and projections are based on current enrollment and staffing. So we don't really look at much changes. We just try to take with the numbers we have. So the standard practice in Spooner Area School District has been five seats per grade level, 4K through 12. These are seats that are provided without consideration of special education programming. So for Spooner Elementary, that would be 30 students, Spooner Middle School, 20 students, and Spooner High School would be 20 students. For the elementary and middle school, each grade level right now has three sections for the next school year allocated. And the more complicated side of open enrollment is the special education calculation. So when we look at special education calculations, we're a mostly inclusive school district, so we look at a maximum caseload of 23.4 if, because we do inclusion with students in the general education classroom. The Board of Education is recommended to adopt the maximum rate, state maximum for open enrollment purposes, which is 4.0 seats with an estimated matrix number of 2.6. So each seat is 2.6. Let me try that again. This is where the learning curve comes in. So you have a student with an IEP, that student with an IEP is considered 2.6 students because they consume more resources, they are more resource demanding. The recommended preference to given to applicants is current siblings that are open enrolled, current open enrolled students, excuse me, siblings of current open enrolled students with special needs and in order that open enrollment applications are received. So we take the first ones first. Acceptance of students with disabilities that are open enrolled will be based on special education space available, class space, and then the services, services needed that are currently available without adding positions or significant, significant expense. So the current special education, open enrollment, available seats, we are full right now in early childhood. The elementary school is also full for special education. There are 13.8 seats available for the middle school and then 14.7 seats available for the high school at the moment.
That's a different chart than we have on our computers, different than I have.
Oh, yeah, that's, I had, that's the one I have to correct. And, yeah, you're right, my apologies.
That's the, that was the real one that you had on there?
Yep, that was me. There's about eight calculations you have to make in, in reviewing them. I had to fix a couple of things. So, yes, this will be the correct one and will be updated for you and it will be updated in the minutes or in the board packet. Oops, sorry. It's important to remember, these are not actual seats. The number of students accepted is less than those seats. Requests for all open seats may be denied if an accepting student results in exceeding the recommended caseload in any area. So there, we also consider the area of like speech, language, occupational therapy, physical therapy, because we don't want to push those positions over. And then requests for open enrollment that will incur additional cost to the district if accepted or requires service not provided by the district will be denied. All right, and then the recommend, next step would be the administration recommending approval of the open enrollment proposal as amended when I, Jesse and I updated to you. And Jesse's been so kind to me through this, thank you, Jesse, at the regular board, Board of Ed meeting in January.
Okay, thanks. Questions?
Yeah, the chart that you're showing, we've got four teachers in the special ed department in middle school and in high school with the seats available. Does that just mean that their, their classroom's not as full or their, their, the students that they're capable of helping is just not maximized?
It's a little more, it's, it gets a label of seats, but really it's a way of measuring level of need. And that's what it is right now. And that's not the entire measurement. You also have to look at scheduling, when you get into block scheduling and everything like that to get all the needs met, it's more difficult to do.
It's not that we have teachers with empty classrooms.
Absolutely not. They're, I, I was talking to them today, they're incredibly busy.
That's, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Absolutely. And I was prepared that that might get asked, but no, they're very good, busy people.
Anybody else? Do we have a consensus then to move this on to the board meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item G, discuss the 2025-26 school calendar proposal. Mr. Schroder.
Hey, I don't have a fancy presentation for you. You guys all have the school calendar in your board packets. Biggest thing we heard at the beginning, we started talking about the calendar year was we need to make sure we have our full week for hunting season. We need to make sure we have our full week for spring break, that President's Day break and, oh, by the way, try and get out as soon as possible before June. So if you take a look at the calendar, we accomplished pretty much all of those things. The major changes that you'll see on the calendar is this next year, we are going to implement two floating workdays for our staff. So there are two days that are actually going to be allowed for our staff members to pick when they're actually going to come into work in the building and get things done that they have to in their classroom. We also front-loaded our in-service days, our PD days, quite extensively so we can try and get some of that mandatory training and stuff like that done so we don't have to take that into our PD days during the school year. The only other thing that really is a, a big change is we incorporated our spring break with the Easter holiday.
And Easter is in March next, this coming year?
I believe so.
Yeah, okay. Any questions?
Can we point out one very important thing that's going to be very important to some of the audience out there? I see something highlighted here that says summer school days. Can we explain what that is, please, sir?
Sure. Summer, summer school days are going to be our soft start to the school year in the elementary school and in the middle school. It's going to look a little different in the high school, but in, in those two areas, the summer school is going to be, come in, we're going to get you used to your schedule, we're going to get, do those soft things, introduce you to teachers, get your curriculum, get used to our expect, classroom expectations, things like that. Those are going to be the summer school days in the elementary and middle school, correct, gentlemen? As far as the high school, you know that we have a freshman only day at the beginning of the school year. Well, that's going to be incorporated into the summer school. That'll be the day, the Thursday, and Wednesday will be the lead crew training that normally happens during a PD day. So I just dropped the clicker, but I apologize for that. But that's how it's going to look right now. That's how I envision it in the high school and for the elementary and middle school.
So, and just one more question for all of those listening. If my student doesn't attend those two days, does that account against them attendance-wise?
It does not.
Thank you.
Do they miss a whole lot if they don't go to those two days?
It's a lot of the, the classroom beginning stuff. So they can miss a little, some information. And guys, you can jump in here if you want to, but it's a lot of the, the beginning information, getting used to your teachers, getting comfortable in the building without any pressure of homework or anything like that. I think it's a great way to start the school year.
One more question for the audience. Is all staff required to be in school for those two days?
Yes, ma'am.
For all buildings, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Just Sunday, April 5th is Easter in 2026.
And so it actually starts the, so it's the last week in March and then goes through that Sunday. Yep.
Any questions on the school calendar? Any further?
Nope.
Thanks. We'll move that forward to the, the board meeting. Do we have consensus to do that?
Yes.
All right. Item H, discuss the high school railroad map update. Mr. Schroder.
All right, that's me again. Hey, you'll notice there's a whole bunch of changes to the railroad map this year. I'm really excited. I challenged my staff to come up with some more elective courses because right now we are running out of courses for our juniors and seniors. When they get to junior, senior year, they're trying to plan their schedules, they've already taken that, they've already taken that, they've already taken that. So if you take a look at it, every single one of the departments has at least one new course in the railroad map. And you can see there's brand new flow charts. The, the document looks really good right now. There may be some minor changes of names and things like that, but the actual scope of each one of the classes that is in there, I'm really excited about some of those cool classes in social studies like pop culture through, through the ages. And what was one of the other ones I was thinking about? One of them is actually making fishing rods through CTE. And we're talking about entrepreneurship classes, things like that. And we're talking about entrepreneurship classes, things like that. I'm really, really excited about what the, some of the courses that they've come up with. Now, obviously, we're not going to be able to run all of them next year. But we're going to go through the requesting process and we'll run the ones that have the most requests. And it'll turn out to probably end up being some every other year stuff so we can make sure kids plan out their schedules.
Any questions? Thanks. I guess that's it. Do we have consensus to move this to the, to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
I think I'm on the next item too, so I'll just stay here.
Yeah, discuss, item I, discuss 2025, 26, new and changed positions. We have, uh, about five over there, so.
So I'm going to kick us off with that one. Board members, uh, know that we've had conversations for a number of months now. So we know that change will come for next year. Some of it will come through, uh, change in personnel. Some change is going to come based on, um, requirements that we have had come through us, uh, legislatively and, uh, some just based on the, uh, the needs of, uh, along the lines of what Mr. Schroder's just talked about, that we need to have adequate courses for our students. And so, um, with that, you, you also know what a challenge that we've had here in Spooner, as have schools across our state in, in hiring the best qualified personnel to come in and serve in our schools. So we bring this information to you here in the month of January because with your approval, we'll get these positions out there and have the, uh, the best shot at the deepest pool of qualified applicants. So that when school starts next fall, we've got the right people in the right places, ready to serve our students here in Spooner.
Okay. And Mr. Schroder, as long as you're standing there, uh, you can talk to us a little bit about the 1.0 FTE English Language Arts teacher?
Sure. Um, this position really is coming about it because we are going to lose one of our own, somebody who's been, uh, kind of a pillar at the high school for a really long time. He, he retired, came back, and for the last two plus years, he's been a part-time English teacher in our building. And prior to this year, we had another former English teacher who was our choir director that's no longer on our staff. So we had to, we were able to supplement with that English teacher to supplement the halftime position for Mr. Thornley. So, long story short, I need a full-time English teacher. Because English is the most required class in the state of Wisconsin. They need four credits. And it's our lowest staffed area right now. I have two full-time teachers in that, in that area right now. And I, I need to get back up to three.
Okay, any questions on that?
So, so that would be a net increase of point five FTE.
Do we have that in the budget?
We do have that built into the preliminary budget.
And are you looking for one that has, that can do the plays and everything else?
I would love to find something like that, but I, I'm honestly, I'm looking at English Language Arts first. And that's, that's what I need is I need that area. And I, it would be great to have them come in and be an, uh, exact fit for Mr. Thornley. But, uh, there's obviously, uh, no guarantees for that.
Okay, how about the, uh, high school dean of students and athletic director?
Well, I, it's not a real big secret. Dana's right here, um, that, uh, Mr. Lucius, um, it plans to retire at the end of this year. And he actually plans to put his letter in before the next board meeting. But we would really like to get this out right away, um, to get it posted out there to get the best candidates. As you guys know, this, this type of role can fill really fast. And the candidate, there's not a ton of candidates out there for people that are willing to do, uh, dean of students type job and take on the rigors of an activities director. It's a, it's a demanding job. And I, I think that we need to get out there and get the best candidate that we can do.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Radke, how about the, uh, 1.0 FTE school psychologist position?
Yeah, just to review, um, at the, early, at the beginning of the school year, we had a vacancy open for a school psychologist after numerous attempts at posting. And, um, we were not able to fill that. However, we were able to get a point four. That was a limited term. And I'm here seeking the board's consent to post for a 1.0 school psychologist again for the 25, 26 school year.
Questions?
And that, I, just to be clear too, my, that role for that person would be both special education and also assisting with, um, RTI. So response to intervention when kids are struggling in school, what to do next type thing. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Berghammer, 1.0.
There's a question.
Yes, you have a question?
Jesse, can you send out the, uh, um, job description for the ones that they're requesting? Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Berghammer, talk about the, uh, 1.0 FTE instructional coach, the elementary school.
All right, uh, the potential, the new role in the elementary building. The instructional coach is a result of the needs and, uh, requirements of Act 20, which is a new Wisconsin law dealing with early literacy. Um, we are not looking to add an FTE to our building. As most of you know, we have been slowly reducing our sections per grade levels over the years. Our last remaining grade level with, with four sections this year will be, will be reduced to three sections for next school year. We would ask to use that FTE for this new position. This job would be posted to our SES teachers. And those interested could apply and go through the interview process. Act 20 has been changing, uh, seemingly on a weekly basis. Um, we had just gotten a hundred and fifty slide presentation here the other day about it. So this role will most likely change as well. But the general role for this person will be to assist in all tasks created by Act 20. Administering assessments and screeners to our students, uh, weekly progress monitoring and, um, creating and updating all of those reading plans. And, uh, basically anything related to the Act 20. So again, just want to get out in front of this, um, just so we, uh, just like it was expressed earlier, we want to make sure that we have the right people in the right place and everybody's prepared accordingly.
Questions?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, it's, does it require a specific DPI license or a general edu, elementary education license?
The way we worded it, it would be just a general teaching license, yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Miller, technology coordinator, do you have anything to add about that?
Uh, yeah, I guess I have a thought or two. I, you took time earlier this year to, uh, meet with me. And here, as I laid out some of my plans and vision for where I'm going personally. What I had laid out to you has not changed or anything. And so I'm intending to follow through on that. And as such, um, you will at some point probably be looking to replace the director of technology as I get ready to turn my resignation to you at the next meeting. One thing that I think is probably be the most helpful for you is that job description, the way it's written, is written for a person who holds a type of license I do, which is titled technology coordinator. Because that's a DPI license, a person has to have that license to be able to do that job title. Many districts have shifted, uh, by changing it to director of technology. I think that would be a wise decision to look at modifying that job description so that you would be able to cast a larger net, uh, open that up for both internal and external applicants kind of thing, so that you have an opportunity to hire the best person for the job down the road.
Any questions?
That's really all I just wanted to share with you for tonight.
Thank you. Do we have consensus then to move all that to the board meeting for decision?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Item J, discuss proposed 2025 WASB resolutions. I included, uh, the packet of resolutions in your, in your superintendent applications for you to review. I have to vote on these at the convention representing our district. And, uh, if you've looked through these, they're pretty, you know, standalone resolutions by WASB. But I would probably, I'd ask for consensus to vote in the, in favor of all these unless somebody has a problem with them. And then I'd like to hear what the problem is and maybe information on what I can ask when the resolution comes to the floor as far as debating it. Anybody have a issue with any of these?
Yeah. I think it's on the second page, the first one, the early literacy assessments. My impression is that they're, uh, they're encouraging school districts to have to do, uh, like we would test a, a student for reading and writing abilities in English. They're asking for schools to have to do this in a student's native language. I understand the purpose is that a student who is an intelligent person doesn't get labeled at risk. But I also believe that that would be cost prohibitive for a district to have to do, uh, in other languages. Especially if a person is intelligent, they're going to learn quickly being immersed in the English language. I, I just think this is, uh, cost prohibitive and something that's going to be overcome anyway.
Anybody else have a comment on that particular one? If not, any other issues with any of the other resolutions? Provide me some information to talk about if they, if it comes to the floor and it's debated. Okay, well, if not, I'll ask for consensus then for.
I guess, Joe, I'd have a, and I don't know exactly what they mean by that. So the last one on there, resolution 2505, with the assistant standards across all schools, which includes, they say, private schools receiving voucher funding. Have the exact same accountability reporting transparency. Mine are saying they all already meet the state standards, all those schools do. So I don't know what they're asking here. You're not going to have the same between every school. So I would have some questions on what, what that would look like and the requirement for that.
All right, I can answer that.
So St. Francis, for example, while they're teaching, what they're doing might be different than here. And I, I don't expect us to tell them what to do, as long as they're meeting the state standards.
I think they're.
Right, but above that, though, they're also asking for the decoupling of public and private school funding, which that pretty much, I mean, if, that's.
They're asking for the elimination of school choice. That's what 2504 is.
Is this just, uh, recommendations that you guys approve and then they, is something that they bring to the state or state? So basically, you guys are approving some resolutions to bring to the state that may or may not get passed?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's what, okay, thanks.
Anybody else got any other issues? If not, we'll move on.
Thank you, Joe.
Item K, discuss the, uh, second reading of volume thirty-two, number two, Neola policy updates. Everybody had a chance to review those. Any questions? Do I have consensus to move those to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, very good. Item L, discuss second reading of volume thirty-three, number two, Neola policy update, zero one six four meetings. Same question. Everybody had a chance to look at those?
Yep.
Any issues?
I've already expressed my issues.
Do I have consensus to move that to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Item M, thirty, sixty, ninety day planning. Any questions on that? Seeing none, do we have consensus to move that or what? I guess we'll just receive that information and place it on file. Item N, financial update. Dr. Aslan?
For the month of November, 2024, income of a hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. Based largely on food service claims. Uh, expenditures of one million, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and eight cents. And, uh, on-hand balance as of the end of November, 2024, three million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and forty-five cents. To contrast that with November of 2023, income was eighty-five thousand, seventy-three dollars and eighty-three cents. Expenditures were one million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents. And the on-hand balance was eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and six cents.
Questions?
Just a quick question. So just the difference, I mean, that's quite a bit of difference between. That's food service difference or that's just, we're doing better or?
Yep, so the higher on-hand balance is a reflection of the board's strategy to levy the referendum money and levy to the max in anticipation of the year after the referendum money is run out.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, item, uh, O, approval of vouchers. I got one question on the vouchers. What, I noticed there's a, there's three entries for middle school, elementary school, and high school leak. What was that?
I, I wouldn't be able to speak to that right now, but I will follow up with Mrs. Vasquez and have her get you that information.
Whatever was leaking, I'm not sure. Okay. Anybody have anything with vouchers? Do we have consensus to move that to the regular meeting as part of the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Item three, I need a motion to adjourn.
Still moved, second.
Any questions, any discussion? Hearing none?
Aye.
All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All those and all.